Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Directors, James City County Service Authority Board of Directors. Hello, Mr. Powell, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Would you mind calling the roll?
Here.
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 Here. If I could please entertain a motion to allow Ms. Sadler to participate remotely due to an illness that prevents her from attending the meeting?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. Ms. Sadler, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
How are you? Ms. Sadler, do you designate the vice chair as the presiding officer for today's meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to presentations. Are there any presentations, Mr. Powell?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any public comment?
No.
That brings us to the consent calendar. There's a motion to approve the consent calendar. It's one minute's adaption.
No move.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, motion carries. We have no public hearings today, right?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That brings us to board considerations. One, a contract award, five forks water treatment, plant roof replacement, $337, $700. Mr. Powell?
Yes, thank you. The roof at the five forks water treatment facility has been leaking. It is actively leaking and needs replacement. The timing's not great, but we do set aside funds for that facility in every year CIP, so funds are available to fund this roof replacement. The contract is part of a cooperative contract. Centennial Contractors is the contractor and staff recommends approval of the contract in the amount of $337,700.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Powell? Right, is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to item two under board considerations, contract award, annual water and wastewater construction and repair services. Mr. Powell?
Thank you. We have several contractors that we keep on annual contract in case we need them to assist with any repairs or maintenance that we may need to do on our infrastructure. The previous annual contracts expired or about to expire. We went through a process to renew those contracts. There are three contractors that submitted responses and we're recommending that all three be approved, and that is Henry S. Branscombe, JSG Corporation, and Toanna Contractors. The contracts will be for an initial term of one year with four additional one-year renewals. We've worked with all of these contractors in the past and have had satisfactory results with them. So staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
For approval.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye. That brings us to board requests and directives. Look to the board for any comments for directives. Sadler, you okay?
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Great. That brings us to general managers update. Mr. Powell?
Just had a couple of things I wanted to share briefly. First of all, you approved a contract, I think a couple of months ago now, for the repairs to the elevated storage tank in Stonehouse. Just wanted to report those repairs have been successfully completed. Everything's back online. So the other thing I wanted to mention related to the budget and the new fees and charges and the fourth tier, everything we've talked about up until this point has been that that would have an effective date of July 1st. And as we get closer to July 1st, what we've realized is that it would really be helpful in terms of ease of administration and ease for the customer to understand their bill if we made the transition on July 6th instead of July 1st, just because of the billing cycle. That way, the new fees and charges will, they won't overlap in one bill. So it gives a much cleaner, cleaner break and, as I said, much easier to administer and much easier for the customer to understand. So obviously not significant revenue implications, but I did just want to mention that today, so it won't be a surprise in two weeks when you adopt the budget. But if you're okay with it, the resolution will be amended to say that the new fees and charges will take effect on July 6th instead of July 1st.
Anything else?
No, that's all I've got.
I will just make a comment if I might, that I received my first monthly bill and it was about a third of my quarterly bill, as it turned out. I was a little surprised, though, since we're spending so much more time at home.
Yeah, now that my college daughters are home, I'm a little concerned. Mine came and it was two months.
Yeah.
And said it was working towards.
Right, right, right.
But yeah, I would have much preferred this happened after they'd gone back to college, but oh well. So, but, so have you heard from it, much feedback on that?
No, I really, I really haven't. The process seems to have gone smoothly. I think I've mentioned this before, but really the biggest feedback, most negative feedback I've gotten really isn't related to the monthly billing. It's related to the sub meters. And I do continue to get some, not, not a lot, but I do still get some negative feedback about the requirement to, for customers to read their sub meters more frequently now. But that really seems to be the biggest, the biggest concern.
I did have a neighbor who will be contacting you. I guess the benefit, we talked about going to this, whether he's on one month, two month, but it was much higher than it should have been for a single person in the house.
Okay.
I told him he probably has a leak somewhere and invited him to contact you guys.
Okay.
I think this may help us identify leaks a lot quicker.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I did get, I did have one constituent who wrote to me expressing concern about the move, but when I explained to him the rationale as you've provided to us before, he was satisfied with that.
Okay. Thank you all very much. With that, we, without objection, we will adjourn until 5:00 PM on June 9th, 2020 for the budget adoption. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a work session. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
And I'll look for a motion to allow Ms. Sadler to participate remotely due to an illness that prevents her from attending the meeting.
No move.
We thought they made the motion. Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Okay, so your meetings. Still there?
Yes, it's breaking up. Thank you.
Good, okay. We now start the work session with board discussions. First is a briefing on Phase Two activities of the Engage 2045 Conference Eplan Update Process. Ms. Harriet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Today marks our third check-in with the Board of Supervisors during the Engage 2045 process, the process to update our comprehensive plan. With me today is Vlad Gavrilovit, Principal with EPR PC, as well as Rich Krop, our Planning Commission Chair. Since our last check-in in February, the consultants, the staff, the CPT, and the Planning Commission Working Group have all been working diligently on several fronts which you'll hear about today. Dissecting the public engagement themes, developing the draft scenarios, and gearing up for our next round of public engagement this summer to present those scenarios. Our key objectives for this meeting are not only to bring you up to speed, but also to get your input on the draft scenario narratives and approach the public engagement. In terms of, next slide, in terms of dissecting public input for use, one exercise we've been doing is crosswalking against our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan to allow, which were also big public engagement efforts, to see how they track. As a reminder, following the adoption of the 2035 comprehensive plan in 2015, the county undertook its strategic planning effort. That effort organized the goals of the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans of the county into an implementation framework and resulted in a number of critical overarching goals for the county to implement. While the strategic plan was more operational in focus than the policy focus of the comprehensive plan, it was intended to implement the policies of the comprehensive plan and begin to shape action and fund priorities. In this slide, that compares and crosswalks the goals from the 2035 strategic plan and the 2035 comprehensive plan. We can see in concrete terms the high level of correlation between the strategic plan goals and the 2035 comprehensive plan goals. As you look more closely, you can see that the top two strategic plan goals in the purple boxes, protect community character, enhance build environment, and expanding and diversifying the local economy, crosswalk directly to community character, environment, and economic development goals of the comprehensive plan respectively, shown in orange. In a similar vein, the remaining five strategic plan goals align well and most directly with the comprehensive plan's public facility goal. However, these operational goals are also very relevant to the comprehensive plan goals for housing, parks and recreation, population needs, and land use, and are therefore shown with the smaller arrows. Looking at it from a different way, we can also draw out the relationships and see the close correlation between the towards 2035 comprehensive plan goals and what we've heard in public input themes thus to date. Looking at the orange boxes on the left, representing the first four goals of the prior comprehensive plan, we can see that they relate very directly to the public engagement themes of nature, community character, affordable housing, economic development, and quality of life for this Engage 2045 effort. You can see that the, towards 2035 goals of public facilities, population needs, parks and recreation, relate very directly to the quality of life theme that we've heard from this effort, and all of them relate to a large degree and are encompassed within our towards 2035 land use goal. Overall, we think that this represents a strong continuity of public interests and concerns over the years from prior comp plan processes to today. Next slide. Given the strong continuity of public input over the years and from different plans, plus the reinforcement of their importance via our public engagement efforts, a central question is, how do we build this input into the scenario planning process? In this integrated effort where we use community engagement opportunities to inform what we're doing in our project phase, and then have the results of our project phase set up the next round of community engagement efforts, we want to make sure that we are tracking along the way. And so Vlad will talk about how we are doing this in this next round of work that we're preparing, and turn it over to him.
Thank you, Tammy. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Pleasure to be here again to brief you and get your advice and guidance. As Tammy said, in these challenging times, we have been moving along and having very frequent meetings with the planning team, probably two or three Zoom calls a week to make sure we're staying on track and getting guidance from the CPT, from the Planning Commission Working Group, and we want to kind of share with you the progress and the next steps. So as Tammy said, how do we build the input we've received into scenario planning, and what's the goal and purpose of the scenario planning? And essentially, it's in this slide. It's to answer the basic question of what are the implications of these different land use and related policy directions on the fiscal environmental health and the quality of life for the next 25 years? So we've always said this is a long-term thing. It's when this little girl grows up and becomes an adult, we're really planning for the next generation. And the proposal we've been working with, with the Planning Commission Working Group, next slide, is essentially a fairly simple one. It's to basically look at two scenarios, two scenario themes. One is called trend line, which is a continuation of the present trends in land use and development, and one is called public guidance, and that's a change of direction that is guided by public input. So testing this alternative land use policy framework based on the public input. Now, you just heard Tammy say that there's a lot of continuity in the county with what we heard this past fall and what the comprehensive plan already says, toward 2035 already says. So that's why the essential kind of things that seem to be relevant to testing are not some radical change in direction, because people are already saying that they want more of these kind of themes of protecting the environment, protecting community character, looking at more affordable housing options, diversified economy. But what we're really testing is the difference between just continuing present trends and then a more robust implementation, adoption of what the public is saying, this kind of guiding vision. And so both of these are to be tested, as you recall, against a similar control total or increment of growth in population employment. And the reason for this is so that you can realistically compare policy alternatives, so that you're not saying that this level of growth gives you one level of performance and another level of growth gives you another level. You wouldn't know what the impact is on the policy alternatives. If you keep the level of growth constant, you can see how different policies will give you better or worse results against that same level of growth. So that's what we've been working on, is building these alternatives scenarios. And next slide, show you a little more kind of detail on what these alternatives represent. So as I said, the existing trend is really looking at what's been happening to date and taking these current land use and development patterns and continuing them. And that includes a predominantly single-family dispersed development pattern, commercial is primarily service sector, tourism, retail, continuation of small-scale retail areas, fairly limited mixed use and redevelopment, and primarily automobile transportation, limited kind of other options. And then the public guidance is really taking what we've heard in the public input and kind of putting that to the test. So there's a greater protection for rural lands. In the existing trend scenario, there's still development, this small-scale subdivision occurring in the rural lands, whereas in the public input, that's far more limited to traditional agricultural uses of farming and forestry and things like that, and other kind of rural economic development scenarios. And then there's a more kind of diversified employment and commercial base to the county. Residential development still occurs in single-family, but is also occurring much more in mixed use and other housing types that give more kind of affordable or kind of more diverse options for different income levels. Commercial, as I said, is a more diversified base, providing more diverse economic and employment opportunities, and there's more mixed use redevelopment, more opportunities for alternative transportation options to the automobile. So those are the kind of big picture things. That's especially what we want to get your kind of affirmation or guidance on, that we're on track with these two basic scenario narratives or themes. And then the other thing we're doing is looking at performance measures. So next slide. What we've done is built a set of performance metrics that will tell us how these scenarios are performing, and we've built these based on the five big themes of public input that we've heard, that Tammy shared with you. And I won't read through all these, but just to give you a sense of them. So for example, how do the scenarios compare in their impact on watersheds, on environmental kind of features? How do they compare in terms of community character, the amount of land, rural lands consumed by development, proximity of development to cultural historic resources? These are all quantitative things. These are all ways that we can quantify the differences. Affordable housing is the diversity of new housing types that allow different kind of income levels, economic development, similarity diversity in commercial jobs and employment opportunities, and then quality of life. How close are you to parks, transit, schools, libraries, police, things like that? So this is what we're proposing to use as kind of our performance indicators, quantifiable ways of testing which scenario best meets what the county kind of vision is and what we've heard from the public. Next slide. So the other thing we want to share with you, and this kind of flow chart describes it, there's a common misconception about scenario planning. They want to clarify and clear up, and that is that when you go through a scenario planning process, you end up with a preferred scenario that the public says this is what we would prefer. That does not automatically translate into your future land use plan, into your comprehensive plan. What that does is, that preferred scenario informs a set of goals and policies, a refined policy framework, if you will, that is the basis for the new comprehensive plan and is the basis for the new future land use map. So really, it's a data-guided process, not a data-driven or data-imperative, where you have to take the preferred scenario, and that automatically becomes your preferred land, your future land use map. And that's what this is showing, is we're going to take the scenario results, those go into a round of public meetings. Want to talk about that under the COVID conditions in a second, but those go into a public input. Public input guides and informs that new policy framework, and then that gives you the, the policy framework starts to build that future land use map. However, there's that arrow that points to the top, so that future land use map will also be built into the computer model, and that's going to be the basis for this lead behind model that the county can use for day-to-day planning and kind of checking the metrics of performance for fiscal, environmental, transportation, and other things. And then ultimately, that goes into implementation. So that's just something I wanted to clarify, how we get from where we are now to a new comprehensive plan. Next slide. So as we look to the next steps, we are actively building these scenarios now, working with the planning team. We've been working also with the CPT on how we get these in front of the public under these conditions. And we had a great kind of start to this in November with our summit, because we had a lot of online input, and the primary numbers of input were really online, through this program called MetroQuest that allowed this kind of visual interactive platform for the public. The county has gotten a new grant to allow the continuation expansion of this MetroQuest, very timely with these, with these conditions. So what we're looking to do is have primary input be through online platforms, survey instruments like MetroQuest. Depending on the conditions, also having options for appropriately-distanced live Q&amp;A sessions and a live presentation, and then leaving that online for a period of a couple of weeks or a month, so that we can get, drive public input to that online platform. And then that will probably occur in the July-August timeframe, after the June kind of presentation of these results to the Planning Commission Working Group, excuse me, Working Group. And then looking to the fall is when we will take that public input and start building the new chapter-by-chapter comprehensive plan and the future land use map. So next slide. This is just to show that we are kind of on track. We are just about getting to the alternative futures, which is a real pivot point in the process. When you get that input on the future direction, that's when we can start in the fall and the winter, building the comprehensive plan and looking to implementation as we get into the new year. So that's it. Kind of, we really look forward to any kind of advice and guidance and certainly answering any questions. I also wanted to turn it over to Rich to share kind of Planning Commission Working Group input.
Thank you, Vlad. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to very briefly summarize some Planning Commission Working Group talking points from two meetings that we had. One was the April 6th meeting and the other one was on May the 6th. At the April 6th meeting, we reviewed the items that you just saw, things like whether there's a correlation between public input themes and existing plan goals, scenario, development, performance indicators, and so on. And the, the Working Group felt that there was a very strong correlation between public input themes and the existing plans that we have out there. We also discussed moving on to plans and goals and so on, whether the Working Group should start focusing on drafting goal language. And we felt that that was premature, that was putting the cart before the horse, that at this point in time, we really need to focus on scenario planning, and then when that's completed, then we could start looking at drafting goals for the framework of the, of the new comprehensive plan. One thing that, that we did feel very strongly about, and that is that it's important to use the public input themes, the wording of the public input themes, in our scenarios, that when we present these to the public, we want them to, to realize that we, we took their input, we used their language, and we are preparing these scenarios based on the public input. There was a little bit of concern raised that the number of actual citizen participants in the process so far is significantly smaller than the overall population of James City County. And so we did feel that there still needs to be effort looking at best practices or creative ideas that may not have been brought up so far in the citizen comments, but that could, could benefit the James City County. You heard Vlad talk about the fact that there's, there's two scenarios, and the Working Group did discuss whether that was limiting ourselves, whether we should have more scenarios to model. have more scenarios to model. But we realized that all of the, well, with more scenarios, then you you run the risk of more overlap between them and and not a clear and clean comparison. But we also realized that the citizen inputs to date really have focused on only two things. One is the current state of development in James City County, and the other is how they would like to see James City County develop. And so the the two scenarios that that Vlad and Tammy discussed are what we felt really best summarized the citizen input to date. The bottom line for the April 6 discussions was that we felt it was very important, again, to make sure that we're we're taking the guidance from the public that we're receiving with the various themes and incorporating them into the plan itself. We also requested sort of an out-of-cycle meeting on May 6 in order to give some feedback to staff on topics that we would like to see addressed during the chapter-by-chapter process as the comp plan unfolds. There were, there are a number of issues that we felt were really pressing, really important for the county, and that we wanted to make sure that staff had a far enough advance request that we would be interested in discussing those. I won't go through all of them, but a couple of the highlights include watershed planning and and the the feeling that we really need to aggressively pursue fixing existing water problem, watershed problems that we have in the county. And possibly even look at trying to key, possibly on the land use map or or some other tool, key a way to determine pervious versus impervious cover. Are certain areas of the county excessively high with impervious cover? Do we need to take a look at that in our in our land use planning efforts? So we we talked about that and and we also took it a step further. That was more on the environmental segment of the discussion. But we also had a lengthy discussion stressing the need to address flooding, existing flooding from the standpoint of roadways, neighborhood safety, and land use. And so we we felt that this was a a worthwhile topic to really delve into. As you would guess, workforce and affordable housing came up as well. And one of the questions, open-ended questions we'd like to get staff feedback on is would James City County benefit from having a housing authority? Leansburg has its own housing authority. Are there ways to develop that to help solve the workforce and affordable housing issues? And and again, there wasn't enough knowledge about the pros and cons of that. So we'd like staff to delve a little bit further into that for future discussions. We also felt it was important to make sure that we're incorporating the Workforce Housing Task Force recommendations into the our our inputs to the comprehensive plan. Public-private partnerships arose, the fact that we know that James City County has very limited public-private partnerships. But the question was, are we missing some opportunities for revenue generation or or economic development in the county? And so the the request was made to talk a little bit more about that. And then certainly not the last item, but but the one last one that I'll present to you tonight is that we had a discussion about scenic overlay along community character corridors or other scenic areas of the county. And one of the the examples that came to mind was a recent land use case in which a conservation easement on Forge Road was amended and applied to two properties. And one of the, one of the offshoots of this was that there was an agreement to provide a 400-foot easement or setback from the roadway to into the properties before any type of housing or other type of development would take place. And that would preserve the agricultural and equine activities that currently characterize that road. So the the thought is that there are tools out there that that could maybe help preserve the most scenic parts of our county. And and the feeling was that we we really need to protect the community character using a variety of tools, whether it be guidelines, regulations, or other types of land use programs, PDRs, and so on and so forth. So so there was a lot of interest expressed in those particular topics. And again, the thought being that if we notified staff early enough, they could start bringing some of that information, gathering some of that information in preparation for detailed discussions. And that concludes the my summaries of the two TC Working Group meetings.
A few. And it could be for anyone. Strategic plan and the comp plan. How do you see the strategic plan driving the comp plan or the comp plan driving the strategic plan?
Tammy may want to add to it, but I'll share my thoughts on it. And we also have Clarion on the team who who helped the county develop the strategic plan. But the way they see it and the way it's been kind of presented to the the county and the public as a whole is that the comprehensive plan is the big overarching policy document that guides the county long-term. Strategic plan is a more short-term kind of a plan of action. And they're pretty much in sync, as you saw, the the goals are together. But once this comprehensive plan is done, then the strategic plan will be refined to see if there's any tweaks needed to it based on this comprehensive plan. Is that fair to say?
Should that? I'm I'm thinking of strategic plan being the plan of of what we're going to do. I'm seeing the comp plan as the working plan under that, that that's the work we will do and how we'll manage the community and what we'll expect in certain areas and what planning will expect. And that's what I, for the strategic plan, I see that as as something higher, as saying this is what this is what we're we're going for. These are all, and then under that would be the comp plan, that this is how we're going to do all these pieces and components to meet our goals of what we have in the strategic plan. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, I would probably almost reverse it in that the comprehensive, the strategic plan is very much more specific about what you're going to be doing as a board. But the comprehensive plan has this 25-year time horizon. Strategic plan is what, two, three years?
Five, 10.
Five years, yeah. So comprehensive plan is a bigger container, because it's got long-term timeframe and big-picture policy direction. Strategic plan fits inside it, is in sync with it, but it tells you what you're going to do within five years.
And I might add in too, it is one slice. There are other adopted county plans that fit under the umbrella of the strategic plan, whether it be your Parks and Parks Master Plan or your Social Services Master Plan or what have you. You know, the the strategic plan looks at them all.
Right, and that's why I see that as being the the larger of the two, even though the comp plan is a bigger animal to handle than, you know, but the strategic plan, not just the facets of the county, what we're going to look for and what we're trying to hit. So from police to fire to planning to to everything and how we handle community services and and how we handle water. And and so I see that as a larger, as far as vision, maybe I should put. And the comp plan is the working component, that, okay, this is how we're going to handle in the comp plan. These are the things we're going to put in place and it's a more detailed part of the strategic plan. Does that make sense?
And maybe another, you know, it's it's sort of back and forth a bit, you know, when you talk about it from a higher level to a lower level. I would say, as Vlad mentioned, that the comprehensive plan is very long-range. And so the strategic plan is going to be very specific and very focused in what activities are going to take place, whereas the comprehensive plan is going to go beyond that. And it's going to be very broad in some respects and much more, what's the word I'm looking for, aspirational, whereas the strategic plan is the nuts and bolts and getting down to it and, you know, communicating that to the public. So just keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, and I and I and I know when we started, because we didn't, we've never had a strategic plan. So when we started putting that in place and 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 that seemed to me to be more of where the community wanted to go and how we wanted to react and interact with everyone. And then the others were pieces underneath, they go hand in hand. But there are pieces underneath it. It's like the strategic plan covers more than just the comp plan. It covers almost our daily lives and how we're going to live it in in James City County, where the comp plan is the nuts and bolts of how we plan and what we're going to plan, what we see our future as, what we see development being, what we see our natural resources, natural hunt. So that was just, that was just, one, as y'all are going through this, is is how I'm looking at it and just my opinion of of one. With our comp plan, and I've asked this ever since I've been on the board and and before I got on the board, I'd really like to know, and this is a very hard one, so it's it's not y'all, is what are we going to look like? I've said it, I even campaigned on it. What are we going to look like? And the presentations all are great, they're showing us a lot of things that we're trying to figure out what we're, but what are we actually going to look like? And the reason I'm asking that is because people used to come to James City County because of our uniqueness, and they wanted to come visit our stuff. And slowly, we're becoming the same thing as every other community. And that worries me. You know, not saying anything bad about any other community, they're great communities and our neighbors and we work well with them. But I don't want to look like another community. We've always been unique here with everything we've had. And so I'm worried about that and, you know, and and that's something I think that not only we can help with the new people that are coming in, and I'm I'm kind of bouncing around my all my thoughts and all, but but the new people that are coming in, but some of our older people that have been in the community for a long time, they're pretty much set in their ways, they're gonna, I'm not going to, they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do, and they're gonna listen to whoever they want to listen to, and they're gonna put in whatever they want to put in, and that's really not what we're gonna do. And that's not what we're trying to do. And I'm trying to convince the the older group that's been here a long time, come tell us your opinions. Come tell us some of the things we don't know and some of the things that happened before we were here, born or whatever. And tell us what, you know, and try to incorporate some of that. Maybe it's a lost history component to the comprehensive plan. And there, you know, you're, we've got a lot of people that are that are moving into the area and they left in there that they didn't like. And they came here because they like what we're doing, they like what we have, and we've got a great community. But when they get here, all of a sudden, they want to change something. Well, I like a supermarket within walking distance. I want a theater within walking distance. I want this in a walking distance. And little do they realize that over time, they've slowly created what they hated and left. And if they leave, I don't want it left like that. I want to make sure that, you know, as we're planning, we don't have, we don't create a community that someone left because they hated. And now they're living here and they're like, this is the baddest place I've ever lived. You know, because it's not. We've got a very unique community. All our water, with all our open space, with all our green space, with all our buildings, with everything, we've got a very unique area. So it's trying to figure out, how do we not become what you left, but stay like what we are? That's what drew you here. And sometimes it's telling people that, no, you may not have a theater within walking distance. And a lot of the things, you know, you're seeing a lot of stuff coming in, I want something within walking distance in my community. If we're going to do that, then we've got to concentrate on the PSA area within where we can control it, not out in the rural lands. And all of a sudden, now I've got to take everything out in the rural lands in order to make this work. Rich, you're dead on it with with Forge Road, and I helped craft that design thing a little bit with my little knowledge, I know. But Forge Road ought to be a designation all on its own, in my opinion. And it it ought to be preserved. And it's not going to mean as much today, it's going to mean as much in 40 years from now. And then they're going to look back and go, I don't know who it was or what group planned this thing out, but they must have been really smart. You know, and and they're gonna, they're gonna try to figure out, how did they do this, what happened? And I think we'll, you know, we've got so many unique characteristics in James City County all across there. And of course, we can't pay for them all, but we can put, start putting things in place and planning that will allow us that these certain areas we hold dear in James City County. So if we do, how do we, how do we protect them without putting too many rights on the owners that own the land that they're now smothered? So how do we balance that out? And I think that's getting out to the community, getting out to the Forge Road people, say we need to have a meeting, we need to discuss this. One large subdivision on Forge Road, kiss it goodbye. And I'll probably crow on the road if that ever happens, because it's just, it's just such a beautiful road. But if somebody wants to come in and put it in there, it may not ever come to us board. It may not ever appear in this board if they do everything by right. We may get blamed for it, but we got tough skin, we get blamed for a lot of things, and we just move on. But we can't, that won't ever come to us. Then you've lost that piece, and you've never seen anybody tear down a neighborhood and put woods back up or put open fields and gardens or anything else. And, you know, in workforce housing, unless we go up, with everything we have and everything we're protecting and everything we're doing in James City County, and the cost of land, it's not going to work. It's going to have to start stacking, which, you know, is, we're going to have to look at townhouses, apartments, tighter areas, tighter communities for some of the workforce housing, because it's just not out there, there's no way you can, you can build it and make it work. So those are, those are just a few of the things. I think it's a great job y'all are doing and and working on this and and trying to chart our future. I know that's a very tough job to do and and try to figure out and where do we go? I know that, you know, I wish we had more public comment and input in here. And please, if anybody's listening out there, please get involved with this. I beg you to get involved and get out there in the community and tell us what you think James City County should be and what you want. That's the only way to make a difference. You can't sit at home and after it's done complain about it. It's like not voting. But if you didn't vote, you don't have a right to complain. And the same with this, you need to get out and get your voice heard, fill out a questionnaire, fill it out online, whatever comes your way, get that out there so that we can get a plan. It's not our plan, it's your plan. It's a citizen's plan. We just say, okay, we'll go for it. But it's y'all's plan that gets presented to us, and we get a vote on it and move it forward, because we're listening to what citizens want. So please, citizens, get involved. Thank you.
Can I jump in for just a moment, please?
Sure, you're up next, Sue.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to tie it on to what Mr. Heppel was saying about Forge Road. I'm thinking in terms of the the beautiful community of Tullano and and the the charm that Tullano has and what some are trying, I think Mr. Cropp is is very well aware, he's actively involved in in trying to maintain and recreate that beautiful little charm that Tullano has. So we want to make sure that, as you said, Mr. Heppel, that people do contribute to the conversation. But I agree, we are unique. We have some very rural areas, we have some very, more urban areas at the other end, it's very diverse. So we have a wide variety of things that we have to consider. I agree, I think it would be fantastic to really try to reach out to those who've been around here for a long time, especially those up our end of the other community, because those are, that's where you're going to, you're going to want to, from what I'm hearing, see a little bit less change. They want to maintain that beautiful rural area that we have up here. And and to your point, Mr. Heppel, when I was looking at strategic plan versus comp plan, I was, it came to me the same way, that our strategic plan is kind of the heading. And then our comprehensive plan, even though it may be more long-range, we have to try to plug that into what we've already put together. I mean, people spend a lot of time putting that strategic plan together, and the community was very well engaged with that. So I want to make sure we we have our, even though they do work together side by side, hand in hand, that we're we're plugging the right things into the right direction so that we can make all of this work for everyone. we're plugging the right things into the right direction so that we can make all of this work for everyone. But um thank you, um Pammy, Rich, everybody, it's nice to see, I can see y'all on TV, so I'm waving to you, it's nice to see everybody. Being the hermit that I am these days. So anyway, thank you for your efforts on this, um it's very well thought out, I appreciate it very much.
Well, I I I don't have that many comments, just to say that I do think it's kind of interesting to hear the back and forth regarding the comprehensive and the strategic. So I do think there's a way we need to do a better way of how we communicate that, because if if we're questioning that or, you know, or talking about it, it probably is a little bit of confusing to our citizens as well, so um I hope that we'll continue to get citizen input, I look forward to sort of to um I appreciated the update and I like the direction that that we're going in. Um, I am concerned about trying to get, you know, making sure that we're we're continuing to get people involved, I think this is just drained people and um so I, you know, I'd be anxious to know how we might um how we're gonna continue to um amp up that piece of the participation and and hopefully um you know, we'll be able to do in-person things and that type of thing. But um, but anyway, thank you.
So um I I've got a couple of of comments, let me just begin um by thanking you for the very thoughtful presentation and and the organization of this material. Um I I I will weigh in a little bit on the comprehensive versus strategic plan issue. Because I, my sense is that the comprehensive plan, word comprehensive is right there, um is a is a broad look at what we envision the community to be like in twenty-five years. And the strategic plan is, and how are we going to prioritize the uh choices that we have to make? And uh move toward that that vision of the community. Um and the the strategic plan is going to change over time. As we see that our plans are working and we can move on to different priorities, or that they haven't worked and we need to adjust that strategy. Um but I I think that the strategic plan is is this notion that really guides how we're trying to accomplish the comprehensive plan. So I I do think that there's, from my perspective, uh the comprehensive plan is the is the plan for the community. And it's it's mandated and it is broad, it's not just land use, um which brings me to the next point, which is that I um certainly think it's gonna be important and uh hopefully we will have information available before all of this is completed, but I wouldn't swear to it. Um from the uh twenty twenty census that will help us to see where we are now compared to where we were ten or twenty years ago. Um you know, when I came to this community, it was starting to build out and the average cost of a new home was um significantly higher than controlling for cost of living and inflation uh it would be today uh in our community, that we've seen a movement away from the very large uh planned community homes toward uh more smaller subdivisions where the price point tends to be somewhat lower, we've seen more um townhomes and condominiums and so forth coming through. We also see changes in the character of the population, I think as well, that have created new um needs for services. Uh we have a larger portion of our population who for whom English is not a uh the primary language spoken at home. Uh we have uh that's having an impact on our school system. Uh we have uh a growing need because of the um age distribution of our population for uh people working in healthcare industries typically at a relatively low salaries uh in in service industries who um uh are unable to afford to live in the community, which is driving this issue of affordable housing and so forth. So I think that uh it will really be important for us to be able to look at what trends are operating in the community and what direction we're heading in. Um when we were here last time talking about this, uh um I made a suggestion, which I don't know whether it's incorporated in what you're doing right now. But I think solves the issue of um what I'm hearing is a concern about low numbers of participants, and that is, we paid good money for a poll uh that was widely uh um utilized by citizens to express their opinions in a very broad and uh more repre- representative way. Folks are coming to these meetings, they're self-selecting. The polls were sent out uh to a sample of our citizenry uh with a a request that they filled them out. And so I I really do think that that's um a very rich source of guidance that ought to be combined with the input, when we're talking about public input, we ought to be talking about the input from that survey. Because it is um the folks who are sitting at home and maybe not wanting to go out to a meeting or hadn't noticed that it was in the newspaper or or whatever, uh it's folks who got a piece of mail and said, uh we wanna get your opinion. And they filled out a survey and sent it back into us. And so uh that I think is is something that would be very, very useful to to look at. You know, I think we all have our own views of what what we'd like the community to look like, I think about some of the same things that that Mr. Hippel was talking about, the protection of rural lands. Uh the uh to me, that extends into um a very active pr- uh promotion of environmental protection, including efforts to reforest uh areas where we can. Uh and a a a key aspect of what you're talking about here is looking at the notion of redevelopment. Because I think as we look at some of the areas that developed commercially uh in the past decades, many of them are really showing their age, they're not fully utilized, they really are ripe for a kind of um reemergence, and we ought to be planning for that reemergence very carefully. So that perhaps it's an area where we can get some of the opportunity to address questions of affordable housing in addition to retail and commercial space and on transit lines. So uh there are some really um important aspects of uh the the um choices we want people to look at, that I think uh can tie in very well to the sorts of of scenarios that you're looking at here. And I think are reflective of the opinions that were expressed in the surveys and in the public input sessions. So um from from those angles, I think uh uh this is all uh all very good and and I'm enthusiastic about moving forward. I think, you know, we we all have been talking for a long time about diversifying our economy. I think it's important to point out to people how diverse our economy really is, that we always just talk about tourism. Let's talk a little bit about the manufacturing that we have, including our newest plant that's already operating um in uh up in Stonehouse Commerce Park and uh uh some of the uh great work being done down here in in uh uh the eastern end of the county where we are seeing um SpaceX uh um specialized glasswork being done um by uh a county business. You know, I think people don't recognize that we have this uh healthy manufacturing uh opportunity here in the community because we were, because our predecessors um were so skillful in recognizing the value of having the enterprises, but also in protecting the quality of life by putting them into parks that the average citizen never sees. And so uh I think we have to give a lot of consideration to how we can accomplish the same kind of forethought. Um so uh it's a real challenge, um always a good thing to have a challenge like this. Wouldn't wind me around twenty-five years to see if it worked.
And um I'll be brief in my summary and and it comes back, uh when I got on the board, one of the things that always concerned me was the fact that we heard on a regular basis from our citizens about uh the comp plan. Uh and they were very insistent, very persistent in telling us what they wanted this community to look like. And it was, it was remarkably con- inconsistent from plan to plan to plan. The frustration that I heard was that, okay, we finished the plan and you guys put it on a shelf and that's it. And then when you go to make budgeting decisions, you just do whatever you doggone well please. Um and I think that uh that the strategic plan was an absolutely uh crucial uh addition to this process, because the way I look at it is that uh comp plan is the long, long range, broad, uh you know, that's what the citizens are telling us, they they want this community to look like. The strategic plan is much shorter and more focused, and it focuses not on what, but how. How how we take that, what we want it to be, how do we make that happen? And you obviously have to pick up the input from the other plans that were always there, but never uh focused together, um so that you have, you know, like our our Parks and Rec plans and and things like that. Once you get that done, then that should drive our budgeting process. And our budgeting process is sort of the end game where we say, alright, this is how we're gonna go about funding and paying for uh something that achieves what our citizens want. And there's a feedback loop. Did we, we finally got it all done, did it in fact do what the citizens wanted to do? Typically, we find that out when we do the next survey. To me, that's one of the most uh effective means, because I think it's statistically valid. And uh it it was, it was basically telling us, you, for years, I think, you're not doing what we want you to do. Uh and I think that the advent of the kind of the strategic plan has helped make that uh go away, I think it's helped focus our 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 efforts, so that it's uh it's it's much better. Um I will tell you that the watershed plans, I think, are very, very important. Uh because when we've, when I first got on the board, we were dealing with a lot of uh development up around prime outlets and uh and you could see the effect of that impervious cover uh that was just being greatly expanded. And how how it affected the subwatersheds and the downstream and and uh and the quality of our our watersheds, our creeks. I I I've always sort of viewed it as, when we had a a land use case, one of the things I think every supervisor really needed to do is to pull out that watershed plan for that particular piece of property and say, okay, what's the impervious cover when it was done, what's the design, what'll this do to it? Uh and and to help inform your decision on whether you will approve it the way it is proposed or not, based upon what it's gonna do in in the impervious cover and and water quality. So that's uh, that's something I think that uh, again, we had these plans, but I don't think we necessarily used them in the decision-making process. Uh going land use cases. But it's incumbent upon us when we get all of these put together, is to use them to make the process work. So that's my two cents worth, I love it.
Have one more time?
Sure. I think it gives you a um a good cut of the community with the five members here. We're very close on a lot of items. But we're still not sure of a few items. And I think that might be the whole thing that is, this figuring this out is is taking this group as a cut of the community and saying, okay, these are what they're tied on. These are the items they're stumbling on. So how do we take these items and clear them up? So we can funnel that into one direction. Because we know this this larger group is is what they're wanting. And this larger group is, from everything the citizens said, is what they're wanting. It's just funneling that last little bit into the into the mix, I think will do a lot. I think a a survey, another survey would be, you know, if we could do something like that, I think that would tell us not only what the citizens wanted before, but the new ones that have moved in. What they're looking at as well and 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 give us another clear definition of, you know, as we're moving through this process, would be a lot of help.
Alrighty, anything else? We'll be ready to move on to our next item. Thank you. Now move to capital improvement projects discussion, Mr. Stevens.
Chairman members of the board, I do have some other staff members coming in, so I'm sure they'll go wander in as I get started, I wanted to make sure we were able to answer questions in particular about the FY twenty CIP, there are projects that are funded, it's money that is still there. At the start of the COVID epidemic, we talked about cash and finances and what might make sense to hold or delay. And so my first attempt at that um is this color-coded chart of telling you the red um are projects that I think we can delay until we feel better, whether that is three months, six months, nine months, uh some period of time, but we wouldn't take any action to move those along with down the road unless you changed our direction this evening or after. The yellow projects for me are projects that I think will uh merit consideration of continuing on, but we wouldn't take any further financial commitment without board discussion, and it may be project by project, or we'd come in groups depending on what is going on there. And then the projects in green are projects that are either far enough along or underway, or we've completed, or we still feel like we ought to move forward. Uh that we would recommend you let us continue on as planned with those projects and they play out over the next year as we complete them. To give you a sort of a scope of scale, the red is about five point three million dollars in projects to hold. The yellow uh with the delay, uh the yellow is about eight point four million to to hold. And then the green is just under seven million that we have completed this year, would recommend to complete, that's the balances remaining there. So um as I talk through, I don't know, have any particular order, other than just to see if you have questions as we go through, the industrial development one was not project-specific, we don't have anything under consideration at the moment. So to me, when we have something to spend those funds on, we'd come talk to you about those funds. Um our Skiff's Creek, Skiff's Creek proffer is basically spent, so I think it's in a value in holding that other than it's thirty-five hundred dollars left and that money has mostly um been spent. Your land facilities was part of the money in the CIP, and I do, I did provide a handout, it is on screen, so whichever way you can follow that. Um it's small print on either copy, um but the land facilities project uh was in our CIP, we had held for you for land and facilities. We have talked about two pros- uh prospects there, the Brickyard project and the Avian project. If you were to spend those funds, that's about a million, so that would still leave six hundred thousand. But we would be back to the board to talk to you about those properties or those projects before we would move forward. So to me, yellows are reasonable coding. Purchases of development rights, we didn't have any uh uh particular use form at this time, we would come back to the board and talk with you about that. I think we did allocate some of those in the year for staff hiring that we haven't made at this point, but we did have those funds in FY twenty year, uh they were not used, it would carry over this amount as you go forward. Um in terms of a project to move on, we did have a courthouse lock gate, and I think Grace can tell you more about it, it's about sixty thousand dollars, get questions. But again, the courthouse staff still feel like that's a necessary project, and I think we moved that one forward, so that one didn't worry me to recommend that.
Can I, I I I was curious as to where, what, what is it, where is it going and?
So my understanding is it's going where you hole around the back where they bring in the prisoners?
Okay.
So they can lock that, they can drive in and lock that enclosed area, I believe that's what they were.
Okay.
Is this a split cost with the city?
Yes, it is, um we do have an agreement with them based on population, they're responsible for about seventy percent.
Ms. Boone, you're welcome to sit up front if you'd like, you may have a number of questions, do these tables work as well? You can stand at the podium or sit at the table, not to put you on the spot, but you
No, I'm good.
You'll be the one we'll ask, is probably many questions as others, so. Um anymore on the courthouse lock gate? The portable radio replacement is ongoing, Chief Ash is here if you need had any questions on that, but to me, that makes sense to purchase those as we need those. Uh and so my recommendation would be that we move forward on that.
So can, I'm sorry, can I ask, does this go back to upgrading or is this, this is new? It's York County, I see, so is it part of the nine-one-one, oh, here comes Chief Ash. Thank you.
I'll just stop quoting. Uh so the portable radio replacement is for police, fire, and the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And those are the the small radios you'll see is carrying some dubs on our back.
Okay.
Those were purchased in two thousand and three, two thousand and four timeframe when we first went live on the system.
Okay.
And they've reached the end of, end of life, parts are turning hard, so that was funded over three years. So the one point two has been for the past two fiscal years. And there'll be one additional payment uh to make one point eight, one additional funding source to make one point eight million to purchase all of those. So it's a replacement, just aged equipment.
Thank you.
And Chief, you might stand tight, you've got probably the next four, if they're questioned, you can stay close anyhow. Um station one renovation, uh punch list items remaining, so fairly low cost there to move forward. The squad truck replacement, uh basically complete there, so we would finish that. Uh fire station six, I would recommend we hold on that, and I'd like to talk more about that on the five year CIP discussion, it rolls into the construction projects that's over there, so I'd like to talk more about that in a minute, and Chief Ash will be around for that as well. Uh the settlers market project is the one where we have spent some money, the county attorney working through, and as we have the need for that, I think we need to be able to continue that project, try to close that out. And then we get into the stream, uh wat- stormwater And then we get into uh stream, uh wat- stormwater resource protection projects. Uh our first one, the Woodland Farms, has about seventy thousand dollars left out of a one point eight million dollar project, so we ought to complete that one. Uh the Chickahominy Riverfront Park, living shoreline project is one that at this point I would say for us to hold. We did take bids on the project. Uh we have until, I think, your July meeting to award those bids. It is a shared cost, so I think it's a good project for us to do. But it doesn't hurt us, in my opinion, to wait two more months unless, let us have two or three more months worth of, how is the economy recovering, are we still comfortable with spending eight hundred thousand in local funds to get um a million six-dollar project? I think it will make sense, but again, we would recommend to delay until July, and then we would talk about that again. Our Toanna Stream Restoration Project is one that is uh, at, at this point, it appears to be all grant funds that we would be utilizing. Uh our local match was a hundred and sixteen thousand, but the balance there is five eighteen, that equals the grant, so I'd recommend we move that forward. Uh your Grace's Run Stream Restoration Project is about a fifty-fifty, not quite split on survey and design. Again, I think we could hold on that for a period of time and come back to you in a few months as that project may become more critical. And we're talking about a bid process in the fall of this year, so delay on that. The Toanna Drainage and the Grove Drainage Projects, after talking with Paul this afternoon, we had had some communication late last week, but he convinced me we shouldn't delay on that, that probably creates some issues uh within our rev share project with VDOT and we're moving those projects forward and to some other things. And so I would recommend we change those to green and not delay those. They're really under contract, consultant's working on them, so stopping that mid-strain would really just put a pause in it and delay the finish date for that. I think that could have some other cascading effects on that. So if you're okay with those being green, that's why I would move those back to green. Oxers Run Stream Restoration, uh again, I would recommend we delay that project. It's about a five hundred thousand dollar project in total in terms of balance remaining and about a fifty-fifty split. Our Cooley Road Stream Restoration and our Oxford Road Stream Restoration Projects, uh I would recommend that we move on, they're connecting to other projects, so it makes sense to me to sort of complete those systems, and we would move those projects forward if you're okay with that. Our Grove Water Quality Project, uh three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar balance, uh we would hold at this point. It's conceptual design, so delaying it till we feel better, whether that's three months or six months. We would revisit with you as it appears the economy's stabilizing and make a decision on whether to go forward at that time. Uh the James Harris Phase Four, but local funds, it's four hundred thousand dollars. The same recommendation there is we would delay it uh till we get further along and see how the economy is doing, and then come back to you to move it forward at a later time. Our water quality improvements, I think those are smaller local projects, but you have most of that spent. There's a twelve thousand dollar ba- balance, so we would finish that out. Capital maintenance uh in stormwater with local funds, you have about a hundred and eighteen thousand. And before we have a project to fund, we would come back to you to talk about it. But we would proceed looking, and as we have a need, we'd come back and ask for board approval on that. Uh toward the bottom of, of your page, uh top of the next or here is the building safety and security. Uh and again, that is moving some of the things that we've talked about for the past year uh in terms of improvements in our building. A significant part of that is building F in terms of interest here, uh but I would recommend we move forward with that. Anything on that page before we flip over that you'd like to talk more about? Are you generally okay with the color coding and the recommendations?
Said you would go
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the, is the CAD system um included in this? Is this part of the CIP?
Um it is CIP, it's mostly FY twenty CIP, so they're projects approved a year ago, and we were just bringing these back, so that, these are projects, some of which we could stop. And this was when I was trying to make sure with the board that you were comfortable with us proceeding or stopping and just sort of pausing uh that color.
So the CAD system is, is still a go, correct?
Uh could you ask that?
I'm sorry.
Here, yes, could you ask that again?
Yeah, so this one, the CAD system is a go, correct?
CAD system.
Oh yes, we haven't gotten to that one yet, but yes, that's in the FY uh twenty-one. Um and so yes, at this point, that is still funded, yes.
Just so I'm
Alright, very good, thank you.
Tom, clear.
Just wanted to clarify.
Both the, the handout and the um uh slide, um the Toano and Grove Drainage and roadway improvements are s- still yellow, but you're recommending that they go green?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The other projects under general services, the capital building maintenance, those are various different types of projects that come up through the year. Grace has a list of them, we could talk more about that, but our intention would be to bring them to you as we have the need, whether it's a roof or other items, we would bring them to you one at a time and talk about it, so we wouldn't do any further commitment financially until we've talked with the board and are ready to move the project forward. Um the HVC and electrical improvements, uh had a number set out that we haven't started yet. And again, replacing LED lighting, making things more energy efficient. Um so again, at this point, I think we could pause on that and hold it until we have a better sense of how things are moving. Our building and energy efficient improvement, um these are the continuous repair, replacement of some essential building maintenance items. And again, as we have something that needs to be replaced, we would bring that to you a- and update that, but it would be a, on item by item. Our, our vehicle system lifts and fleet maintenance, uh we do need, uh we have a number of lifts that aren't functioning well. We have some, I guess, mobile lifts that work pretty well, but we should move forward with uh the work on those lifts and having that for our fleet maintenance staff. Facilities improvements, the modifications for staff and roof repair, and so there are roofs. I don't know if Grace, if you care which roof she's talking about, but I do want us to move forward with those projects as well and not let roofs become a problem for us.
You're in a temporary building anyway, aren't you? I mean, yeah.
It's like fif- fifteen
Okay, good, good, good.
Um general services management software, again, sixty thousand dollars, we would hold on that for a few months or six, nine, whatever, till we, again, see how the economy's doing. Um the Grove um Convenience Center, really, it is a green and a yellow. Uh we would recommend you proceed with parcel acquisition, and I changed this verbiage in the latest uh handout. Proceed with parcel acquisition, we would delay the start of the design, so we have a better sense of how things are going. So we would still secure the parcel and have it ready for when we are able to move forward. The library carpet, the library restroom, so we would delay those until we get further into the year and see how things are. Clara Bird Baker Elementary School was the only other addition to the form of, of what I had shared previously. Uh three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is a safe routes to school project with eighty percent federal and twenty percent local funding. Um it's in right-of-way, plans estimated, it's been, right-of-way plans have been completed and sent to VDOT for review. So that's um under review and would move forward once VDOT concurs. The Navien project I mentioned earlier is part of your land facilities, that is moving forward, that needs to be green. I don't know how I missed the color coding there, but that's a, a green one as well to get, for that to move on. Our Brickyard Land Purchase, I had put that in yellow, uh waiting notice of funding. Uh John shared with me that he had received notice uh either Friday or today that um that project has been recommended for funding, so we will bring that to you at the appropriate time. The board would still have to accept the grant, so that would still give you a June or July timeframe uh to accept the fifty percent uh purchase price of that parcel. We could make that decision at that time. The Chickahominy Riverfront Splashpad, uh replacement of cool pumps and chemical feeders. We need to do that project to be able to reopen that, so that is one move we want to move forward. Uh Jamestown Marina is uh almost a two-point-eight million dollar project. I think we have a month or two, and we could either decide then to move forward so it can go to construction this fall, or we could decide then to let it wait and talk about it next year. Uh I do think the docks are to a point, uh of the uncovered slips, that if you don't do the work this year, we probably close those facilities in the camp. I think we've said that probably for the last, Grace tells me, John Cornet facts the last fifteen years, but they really are um pretty bad in terms of safety and the pylons, and so. Uh but I think you have a month or two to decide on that. We bid that project in December, and it came in its timeframe, and it came in about three and a half million dollars, and so it was over budget, so we chose not to award it. We had a fairly compressed, um and Sean, if I get this wrong, or Grace, we had a fairly compressed um bid cycle. We had one bidder, talking with our staff and the engineers, consultant we've got, felt like we would have a little longer bid cycle and go back through the process, we would attract more bidders and have a better opportunity for a better price. So that was the thought, might got delayed or rejected in the um winter, and is back to you to consider in the June timeframe. If it went out to bid in June, you would see it in September-ish for a, an award, so they could get to work in October, November and be finished by April maybe, so.
So where does the dredging fit in and?
The dredging is part of that, and, and you want to talk about the dredging in the area?
Um I'm gonna actually defer to Sean on the dredging of, do you know the dredging area?
As I understand it, and Sean, you can correct me or come add to it, but it's, it is all the basin for the marina. So it was the dredging of the basin for the marina, the bid price was somewhere about four hundred thousand dollars. There was a dredging component and a disposal component. We were providing acreage upon which they would put it all, but you had to environmentally protect that area with silkscreen and other features, but it was the basin itself up to the shoreline, um as I understand.
There's actually two phases of the dredge, and Scott's right on the first phase, and the second phase would actually be out towards, towards the channel. What they were trying to do was um, with the first phase is dredging the basin area, they wanted to keep as much sediment stuff out of the channel to almost act as a protection.
I'm glad
Good, Sean.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um they wanted to use it more as a protection uh with the first phase before they go into the second phase where they already had some of the, the moonball heads and stuff in place.
So that's under the three million dollar
Yes, ma'am.
Cost. Okay.
So phase two would have a little portion of dredging.
Okay. Because we've gotten, I mean, it's, we'll see what happens this summer, but we've gotten a lot of feedback about that too. But um I don't know how many people Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um the Chickahominy Riverfront Project, um we do think that needs to move forward. There's a new well going on there and being serviced to that park, so that is a project we would recommend to move forward. Under information technology, we had a number of software upgrades going on, our MUNIS software, uh it's an ongoing implementation. We still need to move that forward. Uh you have an EAM software, uh in a general services work order system, and ongoing integration of the MUNIS, so you have to move that along. Intergov software with community developments, so new online, ongoing uh includes electronic reviews, proper management, incident management, so it's uh adjustments to their software or enhancements to it. And then our UPS replacement, the battery backup system, so go ahead and move those. And then we would hold off on the fiber maintenance um replacement uh project that they, we had had almost two million dollars set aside for. I don't think three to six to nine months would be significant for the implementation of that. We had a building collection software in the treasurer's office of forty-five thousand, uh I feel like we should move forward with that. And then we had an HRO payroll software that's been out there a while, and we would just delay on that. We're not taking any steps to move that forward at this time. Under tourism, the Ambler's House, um that project, I would recommend we hold those monies. They, the hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar balance there basically would allow water and sewer service to the house. We really believe it to be less than that. The balance of that that was spent was for the exterior renovations, so you've got the exterior of the house in pretty good shape. We've got money set aside for the water and sewer services to the house. Uh we had a RFP that went out last fall, you know, that we had an interest in someone to do the inside. We'd have to move back through that process, but basically, they were going to put money on the inside if we got water and sewer to it. Part of our delay was figuring out, did we really have to put a twelve-inch water main? And I'll talk more about that in the five-year overview, because there's a project there that really is an optional project in my mind related to the Ambler's House. So for me, if we leave that money there, when we have a new tenant, we would have funds in place um to put in the water and sewer services to the Ambler's House.
And I guess I just want to continue, I know I say it every year, but I don't understand the, the vision. Uh it, it's choppy, I mean, it's a, it's a beautiful home. I understand that it, and especially for the family that had it prior to us acquiring the land. I just don't understand the vision for what we expect to rent it for. You know, it's, it's not a big event venue unless you're gonna put money into a tent outside, because you can't have that big of a wedding reception in, in that house. I just want to understa- I mean, I, I understand that a lot of monies aren't even spent, but I, I would really like to see a plan for the, the, how we're going, what we, what our vision is with that, with that home. I mean, if we're gonna use it for us to, you know, meetings and, and, and staff thing, but I mean, we're not gonna, we certainly couldn't have the whole county. I mean, it would offer, if we ever have another employee picnic, um you know, we could have a bathroom, but inside, but I, you know.
Well, I do know we had a, a somewhat interested in an event venue, I don't know whether that be just weddings, but I think that probably smaller and larger with tenting, but the historic nature of the property, as I understand, it was worth preserving, so we've done that with the exterior. The interior, we would preserve as much, but it doesn't have to be that same um renovation, but they would, somebody needs to bring it up today on the inside, because it's in pretty bad shape internally. And I, at least since I've been here, what I thought the vision and the intent was, was to find somebody willing to put that money on the inside. We protected the shell, I think we can find that person. I really thought it six months ago, today it may take another eighteen months.
Yeah.
Uh but rather than take those water sewer services away, we're gonna need that service to have that money set aside. To the board's concern about cash, we're not gonna spend that money until we have that, we've had more conversation with you. Uh but I do think having it there doesn't make it compete for something else later.
Okay.
Um and then the marina project with tourism, I didn't get specific on that, Grace, do you have more on that piece of the Amber, of the marina?
So my understanding, and I know John is standing by, is that's the phase two of the bathrooms and some of the other um on land things take, bringing the office area up to a certain criteria. So it's, it's those additional things like in a phase two from what my understanding is.
And again, under the yellow code, color coding, we wouldn't spend any more money on that project without coming back to the board and talking. And to me, as we come back with the marina, we can talk about that uh at the same time. So probably as your June workshop, we'd be talking a little more about it to see where the board would want us to be on.
I think there's incredible potential at the marina. Um uh it's been very busy during this phase one. Um but uh, so I do think there's incredible
I'd, I'd like to, to sort of get a little clarification if I can, Scott. You, this is, this is very helpful, very helpful, especially color coding. What I was having, a, a couple of things, and maybe this is this education of somebody who hasn't thought about this before, is this is FY twenty, what we're currently in. Um and you're talking about that, uh we can hold off on some of these things, and, and so I guess the money is allocated to that project under that year, but the work could be done over a five-year period or whatever.
It's been, Sharon might speak to that better, but we do have projects to carry
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand a little bit better about, you know, since we're talking about a specific fiscal year and, and delaying maybe a lot of these things, uh how that, whether that, does that get rolled over and do with somebody else's, another, another uh fiscal year? Or, or is that, because I, I guess there are projects that uh where we have found come in under, under budget, and we've got excess funding from previous years, uh how long does that go on before that, uh you know? How far back can that go? I'm just trying to get a feel for that a little bit better.
To kind of give a little bit of perspective on the numbers, our current total CIP budget is about ninety-seven million. About fifty-five million of that is allocated to school projects. About forty million in county-funded projects, thirteen million of that forty million was twenty projects. About twenty-eight million was nineteen, FY nineteen. So some of these projects, we build in the funding over time because we can't afford to fund the whole thing upfront. Green is a good example, it took us a number of years to build up the funding for that. And also, we're trying to put a budget ahead of the bid process. So we don't really know how much something's gonna cost until those bids come back. And obviously, economics and things play a role in that. Um in terms of the carry forward, because CIP projects do typically last longer than a year, most of these projects are rolled forward. Um there are some exceptions, if we know a project is complete and it had leftover funding, that money is not brought forward and it's not reallocated to something else. What happens is it goes into fund balance in our capital fund, and we need that fund balance to fund future projects. That all comes before the board. So the only time we have any kind of contingency in the CIP funds, if there is a very small dollar amount that is left over in a project, and we know that there's something else that needs that money, and it's less than ten thousand or it's some small dollar, those are few and far between. I, I haven't seen one since I've been here.
It helps that, uh and I guess my second, second question is, this is the, pretty much the full CIP for twenty?
Twenty, I mean, it was trying to put a collection, and so it is really close to all of it. I meant for it to be all of it.
Okay, well, I mean, but, so now, so the, the Okay, well, I mean, but so now, so the, 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 the relationship I'm trying to put together is. The other document we talked about, uh, F Y twenty, uh, expense adjustments, which we have projected. Uh, three point, uh, eight two mi- uh, million, uh, of which I think a hun- one point one three million was C I P. Um, those were specific items which we, which would essentially either wind up in the red on this. So things that you, that we basically are, are either, we're not gonna do in F Y twenty.
I have to go back to that correlation, but I think so.
Okay, because that, that was what, that, when I was looking at this, I said, this is wonderful, but I was trying to draw the comparison between the proposed. Uh, uh, fund adjustments for F Y twenty, which, uh, uh, we were gonna. And it looks like you, you actually, if you have to count all the yellow, you've probably got a lot more that we could hold off on and, and make decisions as we go.
Well, for the current year, when we were talking about how to bridge the seven billion dollar short, anticipated shortfall. We only did our half and that came from a variety of areas, C I P being some of that. But to the board's question was what else is out there? This was meant to give you that comprehensive for F Y twenty of what's out there. Just to your point, we didn't stop everything else. And this would, these are, again, another significant amount of monies that you could slow up. And we're recommending that you slow up on about two thirds of it and proceed with about a third.
That, that's, that's much more helpful because I, I, when I started looking at it, I thought it was a disconnect. I'm trying, I'm trying to, you know, figure out.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll try to correlate that better for you to make sure that I've told you that correctly. I believe I have.
Yep.
I'll update this slide and send it back to you. So you've got sort of the latest and then we'll talk about that from time to time. If you have questions, we certainly can go a different direction as long as we haven't awarded a contract.
Questions for?
I don't really have a question. It's just, you know, I mean, there, it's just a statement because I, you know, we've heard so much about schools. Which is, is certainly, you know, I understand that it's, it's closest to children and they're, but I, but I think. Just to make citizens aware, there is a price to be paid also for putting some things off that we do need. But given our, you know, the realistic outlook right now of our revenue picture, some, some decisions have to be made. Some things have to be put off. Doesn't mean it's without cost. Um, whether that's a higher cost when we are able to do it or by patching things, the roof, um, further than, you know, we should. Need to, but we're also taking it very seriously on the county side as well. Getting our spending in line.
Refresh me again, you, you said the, the F Y twenty was about, uh, uh, oh, how many million?
It's F Y twenty and, and prior is about ninety-seven million budget.
Okay.
And about half of that is the school, it's about fifty-five million. So that leaves about forty-one million or so. That's county projects.
Okay, forty-one million.
And you said thirteen was.
Thirteen was in it.
New money.
Thirteen was new money.
F Y twenty.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was looking for.
Everything else was previous years. A good part of that is stormwater projects, um, of the previous years. That's about twenty-eight million. About twelve million or so of that is just stormwater projects.
Okay, so, and then Scott, you were saying of that thirteen million, you're recommending essentially that, uh, we proceed with, uh.
We've got about six point seven five million, the total projects to proceed.
Okay.
And then the, the balance to delay, either stop for.
So we're looking at about, about half to proceed, about half to delay, so. Give us a lot more flexibility on what we want to do.
Yes, sir. And I'll update it and get it to you. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask them. That, that gives us some direction on where to proceed and where to come back and we'll do that. So I appreciate that. The second item, um, we'll see how long we, I didn't have as much of a presentation put together for the second item. I do wanna mention, this is what was in your proposed budget, this handout that I've given you and what we're showing here of the proposed five year C I Ps. So this does not take into account what we have now recommended you not fund for F Y twenty-one. But they're still important projects. And so to the point of talking through this, I thought they were still relevant to have everything listed. Again, this was the, all the s- county's C I P in, uh, the proposed budget. Um, I will tell you that Sharon and I are struggling to fund, uh, the C I P prior to COVID. Not, not F Y twenty-one and twenty-two necessarily, but as you look at the five year plan, if I added it correctly, it's about seventy-eight million dollars on the county side. And that was gonna be a struggle for us going forward. We might be able to fund C I P, but operating didn't have any money to increase. So that we weren't able to increase operating expenditures, which are positions and raises and costing whatever else we do to provide services. So that was a conversation we wanted to have with you on the five year outlook prior to the COVID again. So this really is not a COVID related discussion, other than some of the projects have now moved probably from twenty-one to twenty-two or later. And we need to reshuffle, uh, the projects that are here. Two projects I wanna talk about in particular, one is the Jamestown Beach Ambler's House project that's listed here under Parks and Recreation. For seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And I spent a lot of time, we've spent a lot of time between, uh, fire, uh, building inspections, code enforcement. Uh, general services with Sean and Grace, trying to figure out, is that a need or something we'd like to have? And I, at the end of this, and still have the right staff in the room to tell me that what I'm telling you is great. It's a, it's not a need. There's not a code requirement to, what that seven hundred and some thousand dollars will do is put a twelve inch water main. Twelve inch water main, it completes a loop from four H over to a, um, Jamestown, Yorktown Foundation area. Installs a fire hydrant at the Ambler's House, but there is no requirement for a fire hydrant at the Ambler's House. Would it be nice, uh, to complete the loop for water supply and redundancy and better serve areas? Absolutely. Is it worth almost a million dollars to let the Ambler House go forward for, uh, a project, uh, Ms. Larson, your co- uh, comment. Probably never pays for itself. I just haven't quite gotten to that jump. Um, and we had some discussion of worried about fire safety of the house without a hydrant. Um, to me, I think the house is an empty shell today, is much greater danger of burning down than it would be if you had somebody in it. That had renovated the inside, was looking after it. Uh, Chief Ash suggested if, well, we, maybe by code, we couldn't require a fire alarm system. But because it's our structure, we absolutely could require it. We could fund it if we felt strong enough about it. Or if somebody that's gonna renovate the rest of the structure would incorporate that. And an alarm system that the fire department knows when there's smoke or something going on in the structure before it's a flame outside. Should give us a much greater chance at a much lower cost to preserve that structure. So I didn't wanna tell you the fire, the water line's not important. It's just, it's a would like to have, it's not a have to have. And my recommendation is, the Ambler House is the only reason we're doing that. Now's not the time to do it. There may be a project in the future that requires it, uh, but I don't believe we need that today. So it's not that I don't value the structure and don't wanna protect it. I just think it's at greater risk today and we'll stay that way until we come up with the seven or eight hundred thousand dollars.
So this is, um, in F Y twenty-three.
Correct.
Um, is the recommendation that we push it out or just leave it there and look at it later or, or what?
My recommendation is you push it either to the end of the ten year or you pull it off. And when there's a need for a water line out there, we revisit it in total. The Ambler's House isn't driving the need for it and they've been tied together. There's been some, some confusion of what was needed to do which, which has slowed us down from getting. Proposals for the house. The, the line item we talked earlier with a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, that will do the water and sewer services for the house. This would provide a fire hydrant outside. Till there's a need for that water line, there may be. By the time you, you do the park project there and you build the campsite. So the running center's been talking about in that area, some other things may drive the need for it, but there's not a need today and there's not a project that's waiting on it. So to me, we'd take it off the C I P. The other projects I wasn't gonna talk about in detail today, we were gonna work through with a couple of these that I was trying to either drop or move that was significant. Would give Sharon and I an opportunity to come back. And I wanna go to the next page and talk about the other project and then I'll come back. And this is back to Fire Station Six, um. And this, uh, project's almost, I think, a nine point six million dollar project. We've got, uh, design going on in the current year or prior year budget. We, that I mentioned F Y twenty. Um, I've talked a lot with Chief Ash sort of about why, where we are and what's driving and how we've gotten here. And, um, for a lot of reasons, part of what we were trying to help solve was some of the call volume from Williamsburg. And Chief Ash, you may come up and help me through this so I don't mistake, but basically the calls we're running, um, they're running for us on EMS. Far outnumber what we're running for them on fire. So let me go, let Chief Ash talk through that.
Sure. So, uh, when we came a few years ago in front of the board to talk about, um, kinda what some increasing challenges the fire department was having. We talked about increased, um, volume and calls. Because of where the growth is located, uh, Fire Station Three and Four are our busiest. So John Teller Highway and Old Town Road, uh, right in the middle of the county. So it's our busiest section. That also happens to be where we border the ci- city of Williamsburg. Therefore, because we've sent, uh, for many, many years, sent the geographically closest unit by road miles, the city of Williamsburg ends up being. Uh, second or third due to respond to calls in our busiest section. So we transferred some of that load, uh, of our calls over onto the city of Williamsburg. Um, we were also looking at, uh, some gaps where we didn't have our six minute response times. And we compared that to the comp plan of, um, where did we have the three hundred and sixty-five calls a year? And we identified a couple areas, Kings Mill, Ford's Colony and Lightfoot Central Road area. Of those, um, the one that sort of made the most sense to offer a response time improvement. But also offer a unit available to the system as a whole to help out Fire Station Three and Four was to build Station Six around Central Road. Um, when we did our strategic plan back in two thousand and sixteen, um, the proposal in the short term was to add an engine and an ambulance to an existing fire station. And more the medium term was to build Fire Station Six. I think we actually talked about a six, seven and eight, not knowing where we might go with, with growth. Uh, so the more immediate impact to offset the increase in call volume at Station Three and Four and mutual aid from the city of Williamsburg specifically. Uh, adding those units to Station Three or Four has that greater impact. Also offers us some flexibility to do some training where we still provide coverage. Uh, one of the projects we have today is, um, when we take one of our stations out of service to do training or they move over to another, just to rip down twenty percent of the response force. By removing the station. So having some additional units at an existing station allows us just a little more flexibility. Sort of a variety of challenges. It had volume and had mutual aid with Williamsburg. And then we also had response time in those specific areas we discussed. Um, Station Six fixed some of those, but maybe not as directly impacting what we've seen with Williamsburg. Through some of this COVID, we've reduced some of that use of mutual aid, um, trying to reduce some of the risk to another jurisdiction, uh, for COVID patients. And we've seen, um, that drop in mutual aid and we've been able to cover those with some of our, um, changing the run orders a little bit for our apparatus. To cover more of those calls and that's, uh, seemed to be okay. One of the things we've been, are really looking at here recently has been not just drive miles. But actually travel time, uh, making it something maybe geographically closer, but because it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Versus Route one ninety-nine where you're driving sixty-five miles an hour, um, they make a difference in the time they arrive, so. Things I've talked about was delaying Station Six, um, keeping the staff that we've increased in hook or in the. Projecting out for Station Six, keep those staff, put them at an existing station by increasing the number of units, uh, at Station Three or Four. Um, and maybe handle those volume without building a fire station. One other thing I'll point out is in that number, um, it's sort of when I talked about the, the, the number, also included in there is the additional apparatus. The engine and the ambulance and the equipment, because in our other projects, we've been rebuilding an existing station. We were able to move all the apparatus over. Move all the beds and furniture and desks and things over. In this case, we had a new facility. There was some extra cost to increase it all.
The short term, what it would mean for us is we would delay this. And what I've asked Chief, it was originally, I guess, thinking our strategic plan are put out there between twenty twenty-seven and twenty thirty-one. So I think you could say six to nine years would be a reasonable place. We'd push it beyond the five year plan. He's got a reserve engine he could use. We probably would look to put that into this five year plan. So we replace that reserve engine in year three or four, maybe. It's a relatively young engine, so to speak, but it's in good shape. And so it's one of those things we could put back in service and still continue on. So basically the cost of your staff that you have, uh, cost them an engine in the next five years. You could offset this nine million dollar expenditure as well as another half a million dollar personnel, but we still need to staff Station Six. And move it out to a period of time. Overall, have a, a good impact on service delivery with either setup. There's some pros and cons, I think, to both. Any concerns? That, that is one we wouldn't recommend you get rid of, but we would recommend we push it out and Sharon and I, when we rework it, would have it somewhere beyond the five year time.
Chief and I talked about it a little bit. I had some questions about the station as well. And, um, I think it's gonna, I'm thinking about adding more staff. We're gonna be able to utilize our other stations a little bit better in order to, and then not have the pressure of, of building another firehouse right now. Pushing that out. I think that was a smart move and it also is a good plan as far as when we do build a station. Then also the chief's gotta, you know, he, he knows that we, in the fire service, we have a pile that join. And then in twenty or thirty years, that pile retires and it comes in groups. So it's not like a lot of places where you got one or two. He may end up losing six or ten in a year. And then maybe not lose any for another seven years, cause the group, how groups and how you add people in the, in the service. So this is preparing them also for the, not only for the new station, but, and also to demand everything he needs a man. And to add more coverage and get our response times down, but then the retirees that are coming up within the next year or two. And he doesn't know quite how many, but they're coming and there may be a few more than what he's planning on, so, as they're able to retire out, so.
And the, the Fire Station project, the nine point six million was borrowed funds. That doesn't help to the tune of nine point six million in cash. But it does help on the debt service side or provides some ability to borrow for some other projects. The Ambler project, I believe, was cash funded. So that does help to what you see in, in that year, so. In terms of other projects, uh, we were gonna rework them in there, but I wasn't recommending at this point that you eliminate or significantly push around yet. But if you have thoughts on projects you want us to talk more about this evening, we'd be happy to do that. But those were the two that I wanted to make sure we.
Add one more too. The, um, I, I noticed a water rescue boat. That's a large amount.
Well, the chief's working on something there, cause you and I had the same conversation and if we can get somebody else's money to do it, then we ought to have it. There's some, some value to the region, I think, and he's working through that.
I can get you a big boat for that.
We have applied for a Port Security Grant, so hopefully, uh, we'll hear something on it maybe in July timeframe. The Port of Virginia sees us as a valuable asset between Newport News and Henrico. We're really the only staffed fire, uh, fire boat. There's a lot of, uh, volunteer organizations along the James River, so they can count for us if any incidents between. Hope that we put together a good application.
Now, and I know you're very detailed on what you're spending. You don't, you don't waste it much, thank you.
I have one other question and, and it's sort of, it's sort of like similar to what we had to twenty. Uh, when I was looking at the F Y twenty-one expense adjustments under the ten percent. And then you have transfers to C I P and it looks like our stormwater infrastructure is about one point four seven. And, and a bunch of, uh, others that total up, total is about two point three million. So that, that the C I P, basically what you would be doing is take, be taking about two point three million of, of these particular projects. Out of the F Y twenty-one C I P that we have in the first column. Is that's correct?
And I think, uh, Mr. Stacey has reorganized some of those to show in your proposed budget what they would be, but the answer is yes. Those that I'm showing in the first column.
Yeah.
That was in the proposed budget. They're still important projects to the county. We will incorporate our, our recommendation would be to incorporate those back in.
Okay.
But I wanna be able to bring you back something, not in a rush on the next five years. We've gotten twenty-one, so we know what to do for twenty-one.
Okay.
I'd like to come back and we're gonna ask you to adopt a budget that has something shown over a five year C I P. The only year you're really funding is F Y twenty-one. And so we'll work these other projects in and come back with another five year C I P.
Well, I, I realize that you, you're gonna be trying to put the whole, the whole five years together, but what I was looking at was that, uh, uh, there are. The cuts that we would, that we had said we would make under the ten percent were pretty well highlighted here. And I guess that, that would then, when you bring that back, that would show the decrease in that so that we would probably, cause I think our totals, uh, I don't know what it is. But, uh, it would be two point, couple, two, three million, two point three million less in C I P.
Correct. What I would probably should come back to you with is an F Y twenty-two and moving forward five years there. We have the twenty-one projects incorporated and it takes five years.
So Mr. Stevens, all I would ask is that at some point moving forward, that we have a revenue discussion. Because you've mentioned the cost of all of these and, um, also, I mean, we just don't know. Do we have any idea on our recovery? Because we haven't started to recover. Um, it's hard, I mean, we've been in phase one, but, um, probably don't have any figures or anything.
I do have a couple of updates, just the meals, lodging and sales tax.
Okay.
Those are the three revenues that seem to impact us the most.
Okay.
Um, I think I provided an update on meals and lodging the last time we spoke. The numbers haven't significantly changed. However, just as a reminder, the meal tax was a fifty percent collection compared to, this is March, March that I'm talking about. Um, compared to where we were last year, the month of March.
Excuse me, the forward, Mr. Stevens. I know we've got a box there, but there's some.
We had assumed that meals tax would be down about 40%, and as of today, it's down about 50%. And again, not everything was closed for the entire month of March, so we didn't expect that to get worse. For lodging tax, it's down about 70%, and we had assumed about 75%. For sales tax, sales tax that we just collected for May was for the month of February, and that was down, excuse me, that was for the month of March. That was down 25%, and we had assumed 50%. We were assuming worst-case scenario. Ironically, on the school side, the sales tax for education is actually up compared to where it was last year. Again, that is a statewide number, and so what's being provided isn't just based on local numbers. So that gets confusing sometimes, because their number is statewide, sales tax, and ours is just the local James City County sales. Other than that, we do have notification that we will be receiving approximately $6.7 million in cash funding as part of the CARES program. We have confirmation that we should receive those dollars within the first week of June. That is an influx of cash. However, we have to make sure we have qualifying expenditures. Otherwise, we would have to return that money by December 31st. We are continuing to track our expenses. We've been working in partnership with the school division. There are some qualifying expenses that we would be able to claim for the school division to help them with some of their virtual needs and technology and things that they've had to do. We're also talking to several of our partners, including the Merrimack Center and some other regional organizations that have also had COVID-related expenses. And of course, we're monitoring our own expenses as well.
Just out of curiosity, it seems like, given that it has to be COVID-related, we might have difficulty qualifying to spend all that money? Is that a fair assessment?
We may. I will say, I am a member of several phone calls on a weekly basis. Just more brains, the better. There's lots of opportunities there. I know the schools has come back with about $2 million, and that's just their first pass. Every day, we learn of new things. One of the things we've recently inquired about is health claims. We are seeing an influx of healthcare expenses for our employees, as well as the school division. So we've asked, because that's directly COVID-related, and we can obtain that information. That would also be something we could claim. That's approximately half a million dollars. And again, we're reaching out to our regional organizations as well that have quite a few expenses.
My concern, I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to squeeze every dollar we can out of that. I would like to see them ultimately give us the authority to use some for revenue loss, but considering what we have to operate under right now, I think we have to have a cooperative effort to utilize every dollar.
And this is, we're talking about half of what we're anticipating, is that right?
The, you know, we've gone back, and what we're, what we found, the memo was a little confusing, at least to me, maybe not anyone else, but it did say 50%, but the 50% is the $6.6 million.
Right.
So really, our allocation is closer to 13 million.
Right.
Well, if.
That's correct.
Because they, in the, according to the Commonwealth, that there is no specific language in the CARES Act that it has to be shared with localities. It's not in the language or the guidelines of the language. They're just doing it, this first one, out of the goodness of their hearts, but they have not made any indication if they plan to do a second round to localities.
That is my understanding as well.
The state may keep it at all. That's correct.
Of course, you know, half of what the state budget spends is money for localities.
I can't, cannot offer an argument. I'm just telling you on being on the phone calls, that's what they've said.
Right.
So they wanted us to be very appreciative of the fact that they were sending, they were giving us anything.
Well, and I am appreciative of the fact we've got 6.7 million. And there are things that I think are gonna be easy for us to figure out how to spend. I mean, every one of our facilities and all of the partners that we have are gonna have some significant expenses in terms of preparing for the public. And I know the schools, we're talking about reducing custodial staff. They are gonna need to have expanded custodial staff with more expenses there. So I know that we've received some communication from people who are worried about some of the issues of that kind. And I mean, I don't think we're gonna have a significant challenge in spending the money at this stage. I do want to ask another question related to all of this, though, and that is that I know that the county administrator has been working with the superintendent on a number of these related issues. I thought it would be part of what we would do today to make clear what our view is on those actions. Because I think they've been very, very positive developments that reflect a good faith effort on the part of the schools and the county to demonstrate that we all recognize the value of what's going forward here. The schools are, as we know, reporting to us that they expect to have significant savings in this year's budget, this significant surplus, which they can't keep, which has to be returned to the county and the city. But they've asked that we consider using some of that money to cover some of the budget shortfall that we were anticipating for next year. And frankly, I think that's a great thing, and would like us to make it clear that we're on board with that and with the county administrator's recommendation that the CARES money be shared with the schools and other agencies.
Yes, so do we need a, as far as turning that money, using that surplus, or giving it back, or however we're going to do this whole transaction, do we need board action on that, or?
That action you could take is part of your budget adoption for fiscal year 21.
Okay.
What I would envision that would look like is getting back to using fund balance. That is a use of fund balance. Normally, those dollars would be returned, and that would roll into the county's fund balance. It would either be reallocated back to the school division for one-time CIP-related expenses, or it would be maintained in our fund balance. I believe the proposal is, instead of it coming back to us in our fund balance, we would utilize it so that there's less of a reduction to the school division next year in the 21 budget. So what I would envision that would look like is, in our revenue sources and our budget, we would add a new line and call it prior year school fund balance, and we would have a new funding source of $2 million. And then we would provide that $2 million to the schools on the expenditure side.
That would restore their operating budget where they've lost up to this point.
It would be for fiscal year 21, and so it would be less of a reduction for them.
But it would enhance our operating budget.
Yes.
And then that way, that would make that even. And then the only pass-through would be their CIP, which they, you know, would all hold. And then the only other thing would be the state revenue that is a pass-through from us to them anyhow.
Or the sales tax for education.
Basically, what we're talking about is, we're not cutting the school anything. And whatever comes into the state is what's coming into the state. So, you know, I'm trying to, I'm struggling. I love all the emails, and I'm glad everybody's emailing. And, but, and I wasn't gonna bring it up tonight, but I was gonna hold it for next week. I might hold some for next week. But, you know, it's, it's, it's not the board of supervisors that is cutting the school. We're cutting everything that needs to be cut, our side and their side. And I think there's a lot of confusion on the general public, and I can understand how, you know, some people say something, and it just, you know, you know, from that, tell one person, it goes through 10 people, it comes back, and it's totally different. So I understand it, and it's okay. But this isn't, this isn't because of the emails, good and bad, that have come to us. This is because of the fact that we normally put it into a CIP or let them use it in the CIP when they return money. We've done it on, since I've been on the board, we've always, they bring the money, they've got to return it back in by law, and then we say, okay, can we use it for such and such and such, and we give it back. So we're doing the same thing we do every year, but this time, it's even more important with this money that anything we can find and gather. And this was talked about long before we were getting emails, and that the money that may be returned back would be utilized, you know, for the school to be able to use in the operating. So that, that brings them clean. Now, they're still missing the state part of it, which, you know, they're still gonna have to struggle with it, just like we are. And hopefully, that comes back higher than what they're anticipating. But we'll have to wait and see, like, we have to wait and see for ourselves. And I just want the residents out there to realize that this board is working hard, not only here, but behind the scenes, with each other, with staff, trying to figure out, is there any other thing? Is there another penny? It's like Jim says, can we utilize every dime of this money? And we said right from day one, when we said, we're gonna get this CARES Act money, we're gonna split it with the schools. It's not like we're gonna, you know, we want them to be part of this. They're getting expenses too. We want to be part of this whole thing. We wanna, you know, we've always partnered with the schools, and we continue. But, you know, it's not from the emails and the screaming. It's from a job that we do every day, and an important job that we do in order to make sure that the schools are taken care of.
Mike, I just want to add one point to that, though, and that is that, you know, part of our job here is to listen to the public. And we can all, you know, feel maybe that sometimes the information the public has been provided is inaccurate or doesn't really reflect the good working relationship we've had over the last seven years with the school board and school administration and so forth. But it is important to have that expression of a kind of sense that the community really does value education. We do have the job of explaining to people that it's not just the schools that are important to the community. They are critically important, but we also have to maintain public safety. We have to make sure that our fire department is prepared. Our emergency medical technicians are out there working hard. That our social services employees are able to respond to the cases of domestic abuse or children who need to have protection from the system. So I don't begrudge anybody sending us letters. I, you know, certainly have developed a thick enough skin over the years that when people will make what I think are kind of over-the-top comments, that, you know, I don't let it bother me too much. I also know that there have been a large number of very, very impassioned letters that have gone into great detail about personal experiences and so forth. And I certainly associate myself with that. You know, my kids went to our public school systems, and I value tremendously the effort that's put in. You know, certainly, I wouldn't say that I don't value the work of public school teachers, whether they're in this community or another one a little farther down the peninsula. But, you know, I think the critical component here is that we kind of let people know, first of all, that we face an unprecedented situation. Secondly, that we are, we are committed to quality education, and we're working as hard as we can to find the means to protect the investments that we've already made in education and to keep the system as whole as we can. And from that perspective, I just wanted to kind of get a little bit of public statement about some of this today. Mr. Stevens, if you wouldn't mind, I think there are a couple of things I'd just like to verify for me. My recollection is, when we talked about this before, we said that the local share of raises, which the state has now indicated it is not going to currently fund, would be $3 million. And that sort of, that's off the table, in essence, as far as the state's concerned.
Correct.
And that in this environment, we really would have to recognize that much as we believe that our teachers deserve more, that raises are just not gonna be likely unless conditions improve very rapidly and very substantially. Secondly, we talked about CIP for the county. We have CIP for the schools, and my understanding is we're just a little shy of $4 million in terms of what the schools and the county are talking about deferring in terms of that.
That's correct. And working with the school division, their proposal has been to shift their CIP a year, their entire CIP. A portion of their CIP is typically funded by their own fund balance. And because we're shifting all of their projects, we also had to remove that funding source, which added to the $2 million, that now the proposal is that be used for operations as opposed to CIP.
Okay. So now we are, we've talked about basically $7 million of the roughly 11 million dollars that the schools.
That was correct, yes. 10 million and some change.
11.2.
Yeah.
And then we, at our last meeting, we talked about an additional $300,000 for schools that would be drawn from funds that were being replenished by the CARES Act money that we had put into the business development. We've been putting that $300,000 towards schools.
Correct.
And then if we move forward with this particular recommendation from the county administrator that we take the excess revenues from this year's budget and apply it to next year's budget, that's another $2 million.
For us, it would be 1.8.
Right. But overall, it would restore the schools.
That's correct.
An additional $2 million, right? And then beyond that, what are the estimates that the schools are using? I guess they're using the estimates for the sales tax for education?
They are. My understanding is that the state has not updated those figures yet. They are providing, this gets really confusing, they do provide estimates, but the estimates they're providing is based on last year. They have not factored in the COVID-19 impacts. So, so again, the school believes those numbers were too high.
Right. But what do we know yet about whether the estimates of reduction in funding from the state based on what we've, the partial results that we've gotten so far?
I don't have any updated information. I don't know if Mr. Stevens does.
So we do have the one piece of information that at least for the most recent payment, which was for March?
Yes, for the sales tax for education.
Right.
Yes.
That it actually exceeded the expectations?
Yes.
And what were they sort of expecting to be the case, or what you all expected to be the case?
They were doing their preliminary estimates. They had assumed no sales tax for the rest of the year.
No sales tax for the rest of the year.
They had assumed a 40% reduction. The actual amount was higher than last year by about half of a percent. When they went back and revised their estimates, that's when they came back. That and some other factors, of course, with their new projection of a year in surplus this year of roughly $2 million.
Right. So then as we go forward for the next couple of months, we've significantly indicated a plan to reduce that gap in funding.
Correct.
With the exception of the fact that we accept the lack of raises for the coming year and the CIP projects, right? And we have now reduced that gap significantly. And in the next couple of months, we'll get a better indication of whether that sales tax for education money will hold up better and the like. So is that about right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's really.
Maybe you could send us an updated, maybe put that in an email to us and with the updated information so that we have it at our fingertips.
Absolutely. And of course, if the, once we do adopt the budget, if the figures do come in above, we would need to come back to the board for the additional appropriation as well. So it would be something you could see on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to bring this out, because I think it is important for everybody to understand what's going on in terms of the board's efforts to work cooperatively with the schools. And just based on talking with Mr. Stevens and reading the letter, the correspondence from the superintendent, I would have to say that our two professional administrators are doing just an outstanding job of collaborating on plans to minimize the damage that would occur as a result of loss of any funding. And that I just want to underscore the fact that our boards, the city council, the Board of Supervisors... the city council, the board of supervisors and the school board have really worked so closely together for the last few years. And this board has, has stepped in to, to make up for state lack of funding uh, for, for several years now. Uh, and, um, I think that is a strong demonstration of the commitment that we have had for quality education. It, it's never gonna be enough to, to provide the kind of education we would love to be able to fund for everyone in this community, but it certainly demonstrates a lot, I think. I would also point out, a number of people have suggested recently that, uh, well, why aren't other school districts on, in our area doing anything else? And you may have seen that in fact, this issue is now coming up in Newport News and Hampton. York County has already taken some action to, to reduce spending. Um, and so, uh, you know, I think everybody is just dealing with uncertainty. And my only request would be that everybody who has written to us, everybody who hasn't written but feels strongly about this issue, everybody who cares about the community, just keep watching us and watch what happens as we go forward. Uh, we'll see what happens with the economy and what resources we have available. But, uh, we're gonna work in good faith to try to accomplish, uh, the best for the community. So, thank you.
Well said.
I, I would, uh, I would offer that, uh, I think what we need to do is have the consent, uh, consensus of the board, uh, as direction, uh, that we would take, uh, the steps that have been outlined for getting the money from FY twenty, uh, back for to put into the budget.
Could I offer a couple of comments before we move forward with that?
Sue, I said. Okay, I'm sorry, Sue, I can hardly hear you. Let's go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can I offer a couple of comments before we move forward with that? Okay, can, can you, it's breaking up really badly. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to tag on with a few things that, um, Mr. McGlynn and Mr. Hippel have offered and Ms. Larson as well. Um, we've all received emails from, um, multitude people. And I understand the concerns of parents and teachers. I have grandchildren that are in the school system here. Mr. Hippel has children that are in the school system. And I think we've all had experience, one way or another, with our own family members, um, as part of the Williamsburg, James City County school system. Um, so we, we understand our board and boards before us have always been very supportive of our schools. I mean, we have nothing but everything to gain by supporting our children and our teachers. Um, I find personally, and I, I don't mind emails. I'm with you, Mr. McGlynn, that, you know, send whatever you'd like to send. But I think it's been very unfortunate and very unnecessary that there's been some apparent confusion created by someone, um, that's created a lot of unnecessary strife for the entire community. And, um, I, I just, I, I agree with you, Mr. McGlynn. I think folks just need to trust that we are, we've been working behind the scenes, our staff has, before any of this even, um, the email started. So I think it's very important for people to please remember that we're all wanting the same thing, to provide for our children, but we have to live within our means and solve issues in a professional and constructive manner. Um, I just, I too would like to thank Mr. Stevens and Ms. Day and our staff, everybody who have been working from day one, as soon as this started, to come up with solutions, not only for our own budget, but ways that we could help the schools in whatever, whatever way we can. And I think they've been very creative in, in how they're going about this to provide the most that we can for everyone, from the funding that we have. Um, I'd also personally like to thank my counterpart on the school board, Greg Dow, for sharing ideas and realistic solutions to some of the things that, that could be done. Um, so, and, you know, as was mentioned, the surplus money is, always has been there. And this year, we're, our, you know, our staff has been very creative in how we're gonna, um, utilize that for the schools and with the CARES money as well. Those, and those things that were talked about way back when, before even the barrage of emails started. Again, uh, we're, we, that's what we're here for, is to hear from folks and we appreciate it. But to Mr. McGlynn's point, I think everybody, if every, there's enough stress, I think, going on out there just with this whole pandemic anyway. I've got, I've gotta tell you, I'm a little stressed out looking at these four walls for two and a half months. So I think if everybody just relaxes and understands that we're, we want nothing but the best for our children. And the school group team and our team have been working amazingly together. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our staff to thank you all for everything that you're doing. Because again, Mr. McGlynn's point, we have to fire, I mean, we have to, um, fund fire and emails and police and general services and social services. We have, we have other revenue, um, fundings that we have to, uh, contribute from our revenue as well. So anyway, that's just my two cents worth for the evening, but thank you, Mr. Stevens and Sharon, for the great work you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Sue. So if I can summarize what I've heard from everybody and if everybody's in the consensus that this is the direction we want the staff to go, is that they're to take the FY twenty school surplus and roll that over to the FY twenty-one, uh, budget to try to offset. And that, uh, they proceed with the option to share the CARES money, uh, to get maximum utilization out of it. I think that basically is what you needed in, need from us as a way of direction. The only other thing I would ask is, um, are you comfortable with what you've gotten from us on the CIP for being able to get the, um, changes and feedback to us? So we have a time to look it over before we go to the final adoption at the next meeting.
Yeah, on the FY twenty budget, we're in good shape. For the five year, my intent was to bring out, was to let you go forth with what you have. It's a lot of work in FMS and finance to put it together. You're gonna have a document that FY twenty-one will be accurate. The others, we have moved around. We will come back and refresh that so it's not a rush for the board or for staff and work through the summer to have you what is a revised five year. There may be some twenty-one items that we're able to refund this year. You know, if we, if the year goes much better than we anticipate, then by October, we may be refunding some of the CIP projects that were removed, but we ought to have that plan in mind. So I wasn't trying to complicate.
Okay, that, 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 understanding, that makes sure, I want to make sure the board does understand that, that we will be dealing with the current figures for the one we're adopting for FY twenty-one. We're just gonna leave the rest of it there and then they're gonna come back and work on this. Cause this is, I, I can tell, this is not an easy task that we're asking them to try to accomplish in short order. But, uh, if that, if the board is comfortable with that direction, I want to make sure that it's okay.
Yes, yeah. Do you want to form a motion on that, just to endorse, endorse the, um, uh, recommendations that were contained, uh, that, that Mr. Stevens and Superintendent Heron have, have worked out?
I think you just made a motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion.
I think John made it.
John.
Yeah.
We don't need a second. Okay. Um, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Okay. Any more on budget, CIP, anything else? Okay. Board of Directors and Directors?
I, uh, I'm gonna do it again. Just remind everybody that, uh, they may be a little uncomfortable, but it's a small price to pay if, if it helps to reduce the, um, the spread of, uh, COVID nineteen and get us back into, uh, some sense of normalcy, uh, in a, in a better way. So, uh, please wear your masks, please wash your hands, uh, and, uh, make sure you keep a safe distance, especially inside buildings, but just spread yourself out a little bit. I like a little bit of space.
So Friday, I, we should, I guess we should, we'll be putting out some information regarding what the governor has said, regarding masks, starting Friday. Thank you. Staff is leaving, but thank you all so much. Um, and, um, he has said that it's not a, it will not be a, um, punishable, I believe, is what he said at his news conference today. But, um, but it is, they, um, he is mandating it, but, um, so if you don't have a mask, get one. He just, poor guy forgot himself this weekend. So, he's apologized for that. So, um, he'll have one from now on, someone tells me. But, uh, so we'll get some information now for that, on, on those, so people are. And, um, so I just want to thank my colleagues because we have gotten a lot of email and we've been working together to send out a response, a response that we, that we crafted together that, um, yes, you are, some, some are getting the same response, but it is something that we put thought into and trying to keep up with our normal, um, work, plus respond to emails. Doesn't mean we're not, we are reading emails, we're just sending a response. So I want to thank everybody for cooperating on that, um, and we'll continue to do so. You know, I think, and I want to thank Mr. Stevens too, because he's been called numerous times for help in answering some particular questions and I appreciate very much, um, that. And, um, just a reminder that particular programming decisions as far as schools goes, that's, that's not a decision that we make. That's a decision that the school board makes while recognizing that, you know, it's, it, during tough times, they've got tough decisions to make as well. Um, but I, you know, I do think that, you know, a lot of the emails that we do get, I don't know where you get the money from. I know it's very tough, but, you know, and so that's, I hope that there's some understanding of that, that, yeah, where will we get the money from? I mean, that is a very, it's, it's easy to dismiss it, but that's a very real question. And, you know, and I think you've already said it. We, we don't just consider, we, we have to consider schools and, and it is a, it's a domino if you impact schools and it, it does impact other things in our community for sure. But there, we have to consider the entire county. So I, I hope people know how thoughtful we all are. I've not heard one of my colleagues be dismissive or any, I mean, it's, it's, they've been putting a lot of time and effort into figuring out, you know, during, something that we don't, we're still in phase one. We haven't even heard if we're gonna get out of phase two. You know, I believe Outer Banks moved into full blown today. So, I mean, our tourism dollars are going south. Um, we don't know when we're going to be getting any type of back to normal here. So we are not out of this very real crisis. We have got a long way to go. So people need to be, to be very patient and, um, and so, you know, hopefully by the end, we'll be, you know, we'll be working our way here in a few weeks and we'll start seeing some return. Um, but, I mean, I, I, just because we've been making some decisions and we've been able to, to do some things that hopefully will help the budget next year, we're still far from being out of the woods, so.
And, and thank you, Ms. Larson, for taking on that lion's share of that response, uh.
Oh, well, everybody helped. Thank you.
Well, yes, but you did.
Thanks.
More than your share.
More than your share.
Yeah, the, um, you know, we've had all kinds of emails and, and interesting ones and, um, real good ones and, and re, real detailed ones. I know I've, I've got three children still in school and I've had seven go through James City County schools. So I know what our teachers do, pretty well aware of it. I know how hard they work and I know what they do, what they need to do and, and how they work with children and figure out the different needs of each different child. And trust me, all seven are not the same. So there's, there's been all kinds of different things that James City County schools and their teachers have done for me and my family. So, you know, when you get an email that says, do you know what this, or do you know, and, and sometimes you, I don't think it's meant to come over the way it is, but sometimes it does. And sometimes you have to realize that, you know, sometimes you need to get to know that person that you're sending an email to and figure out what they've been through. Sometimes they've been through just as much and sometimes not as much, but they're trying to figure it out. So I don't think any of them were, you know, really mean. They weren't there. I think what it was looking at is they were, they were looking at eleven point two million dollars being cut from the schools and we're the reason it happened. And that was the message that I think got so many parents wound up and I can't blame them. If I didn't know any better and I didn't know what was going on behind the scenes and how hard this board has worked for the community, hour after hour after hour, coming together, figuring things out, I would have probably been a little wound up myself. But, um, understand that we're working hard for you. We're doing the best we could do with the knowledge we have. Knowledge is coming in. We're getting information slowly, piece by piece, and it takes a while to figure out everything. We've got a lot of moving parts. We've got to keep the rest of the community going in this process. So keep the emails coming. I do read them, as all my board members read them. In fact, we call each other now every now and then and say, did you get that email? And I say, yeah, I got that one too. That was a pretty good one. And, um, so some of them are very entertaining and, and very good emails and, and they poke at us a little bit and that's, that's okay. You know, that's what, that's what happens. That's why we have tough skin and we do this job, because we love doing this job and we love being out there in our community. So, you know, this is something that's tested everybody and it'll continue to test us. And we just have to remember, we're all in this together. We're all the community. This is what makes up the community. Even these five board members thinking and work differently, but we're working hard for the citizens of James City County. So, and we'll continue to do that. And thanks for giving us the privilege to do it. That's all. Sue?
Oh, I just wanted to give a shout out to my two favorite students in WJCC schools, Connor and Evan. My two little guys have been real troopers, helping out and doing, uh, their assignments and, um, making the best of a strange situation. Our kids have a lot to adjust to right now. And I know from example, my two are doing a great job. So my two little favorite community members, I just want to give them, um, well done and thank you for all your good efforts, boys.
Hey, um, pretty much it. Uh, do you have anything? We don't have, we don't have a report of the county administrator, but I'll let you have, have your, have your shot if you want anything else.
So I've said enough this evening. I appreciate the compliments. On your point, we do work with the school staff on an ongoing basis with the city, Ms. Day and her staff and counterparts, and it is a good relationship.
And I will add to the comments of my fellow supervisors that, uh, I hope you, uh, understand how much we appreciate the work that you all have done because, uh, that has made this work, uh, for us. And, uh, I think the citizens of the county are lucky to have you in that respect, so. Um, and with that, we'll look for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on June the ninth, twenty twenty, for a regular meeting. My birthday.
Oh.
Your birthday.
June ninth. It's my dad's birthday too.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour? Motion carries. We adjourn.